I'm going ahead and call us to order. It is 2:00 on Wednesday, January 10th for this special meeting on the VHS Board, VHS number six board. And it's 2:00, so we're going to get started. Just, we have a ton of, we have a lot of people here today, today too, which is excellent. As I said the other day, it's always nice to have people come to our meetings, so that's great. I am going to ask that we kind of keep this to a little bit of an order so that we know what we're doing. Just to remind everybody, if people that weren't here, people at home on the camera, the board has asked the administration after Monday night's meeting to go back and look at the budget again. So I want us to be able to hear from the administration what they, what they came up with from looking at stuff again. So they will present to us, we'll hear what that looks like. And then we will start taking questions and what have you, starting with board members. And then we will open up to the public. I will say to the public again, too, like I said on Monday night, if you could do me a favor and BCTV a favor, when you're called on, please state your name and where you're from, just so that that's recorded for the minutes for the clerk. And stand up, please, so that you're definitely on camera, that would be great. Is that good? And then just for board members to be aware, too, I mean, the main thing we're doing here is the work, the budget session, and approving the budget so that it can go to our meeting for February 13th. But also, board members, please don't leave when we're done until after you've signed the warning articles, because we have to have the warning articles signed. We've already decided who is doing what, but we have three copies that everybody has to sign. And since we're actually all here, we can get everybody's signatures and nobody has to go to the central office to do that. All right. So why don't I turn it over to Frank first to begin the budget discussion? Frank, and maybe Bob, and then he can turn it over to individual administrators as we go forward.
Yep. Okay. So we do have documents on the back table in the board. You should have what was emailed to you this morning, a hard copy. Anyone need another copy? Everybody got a copy? Okay. So the document that we have for your consideration is $24,591,000 proposal. You see on the first page, it summarizes our revisions from the meeting just Monday. This budget is proposed down 3% from the current level. And we have, the second page is, is the revenues again. The major change there is really greater use of the fund balance so that we could maintain that 3.8 tax rate. So the earlier version of this document had use of fund balance to the tune of $825,000. You see now it's $915,000. We still, we still have a, you know, reasonable fund balance, as you see on the front page there at the bottom. It's less than 10%, but it's certainly more than 5%, so we think that that is a reasonable financial position.
Pardon the interruption. Girls' ice hockey players should all remain in class today. Bus time departure is at 4:00. Again, girls' ice hockey players should remain in class today. Bus departure is 4:00. Thank you.
Okay. So I haven't described the changes yet, but I just was going to give you a point of reference of the financial impact. And then I know Bob has a summary of the changes, and I know the administration is ready to explain them. But let me just give you one more point of reference, if I could. Page three, essentially, even though we've made quite a few changes in that we've lowered expenditures again from the draft that you had seen on Monday, we've changed the revenue assumptions as well. The primary one is what I just mentioned, the use of fund balance. So ultimately, those two factors net themselves out so that the basis for calculating the tax rate remains the same. We're still at $17,443. And then you see a couple of lines down. The line 26 is the tax rate, $1.77. That's what you saw on Monday. So we've made a number of changes. We've responded to the board's direction with input from the community. And this is the revised proposal. And Bob, did you want to highlight the changes?
I'll go through the ones that are number-based changes. A couple of the topics that were discussed on Monday, Latin and PEAK are, don't actually change numbers in this budget. So I was just going to go over the ones, the numbers that were changed. And the first one, and I just want to say that there was a lot of input on Monday night, and it's appreciated, as Ricky said, but people took note, so. The first item of change from the 24, 688 was the diversity program position being restored. And that makes a difference of $78,685. So where do we go from there to try to offset that? And I appreciate the work of the administrators and Frank, and on a pretty quick basis, combing through and coming up with a couple of creative ways to make up for that, putting that back in, and still come back to where we were on the position for the taxpayers. We have made another change in the career center, the reduction of position, reducing it from full to part-time in the medical human systems. There will be at least one, probably one person moving on. And we feel that that program, based on the enrollment level, can be operated with a reduced full-time equivalent. We also, Mike was able, and administrators can explain these items to you if you like, we were able to negotiate a better arrangement with a circus arts program provider. And we were, that was, makes a savings of about $16,000 there. Some of these are not huge numbers, but they all add up to making up for the, what we did put back in. So the impact on the career center from the first item I mentioned, and Frank, Frank can chime in here with that. When we reduce expenses at the career center, we also reduce expenses at the high school, in a sense, because the high school is paying tuition. And based on our total career center budget, there will be some savings as a result of changes made at the career center. And that comes to about $37,000 in savings. We also are moving $61,000 from capital internal, what I call internal capital expense. We have a capital fund that we've set aside for major items. We're not rating that. But within the operating budget for capital expense and our planned operations, we are able to carve out $61,000 that does not necessarily have to be expended in this coming year. So that gives us reductions totaling about $176,000, which is, you know, again, it's not, it more than matches the 78 put back in. However, when you run it all down and put it into the tax rate, that's what's needed, basically, to keep that tax, tax rate the same. So the revised budget then becomes $24,591,000. And that maintains the 3.8% tax impact and addresses the one, probably the key area of all. The other areas are important as well. And if there are questions about the Latin, we had already agreed as of last, of the Monday meeting, that the Latin position would continue for this year. So that doesn't have an impact on the current budget number-wise. And the PEAK program and all, how are we terming that, calling that program overall now? Is there a general umbrella term for that? The step, step up to?
Well, behavioral kind of supports.
Okay.
I necessarily titled it, but.
Yeah. That overall program will be evaluated. We want to make that a more seamless program as it goes all the way through elementary to high school. But that doesn't have a dollar impact on this budget. So those are the pluses and minuses. And if there's any other questions that the administrators can handle, we'd be happy to try to explain more, in more detail. But that brings us down to where we need to be and work by addressing the concerns regarding the diversity program.
Thank you.
Mike, can I? The $260,500 from the general fund, that's to reduce taxes?
That was this year, yes. Yep. And we're proposing 915 next year.
And we're spending $163,000 out of the capital reserve?
So yes, in terms of the net between the 207, that's actually going into the reserve this year, minus the 370 that we're proposing, is net 163. That's right. So that's how we go from our current 946 down to 783.
And then about the reduction, the $61,000 that we used, it said in the email I got today, it was a long-term capital.
Yes.
So that's different than the main capital.
That's right. It's the line item within your main budget, your general fund, operating budget, that is the difference between, I believe our capital plan, you know, including the maintenance shed, is over a half a million. So 163 will come from the, from the reserve fund, and the balance will come out of the general operating fund.
And how much are we setting aside for the maintenance shed?
I believe our, our budget was $340,000.
And that's coming out of there?
That is, it is partially out of the reserve and partially out of the general operating fund.
Okay. And the general operating fund is actually the capital part of that, things that are capital expenses, but are not of the magnitude that it would be set aside for in a capital reserve fund or a bond.
Board members? Sean?
Yeah, I appreciate it. Everything's been done. Looks like everybody worked really hard to get it to where it was. I was just wondering, and I think I mentioned it on Monday, not publicly, but to a couple of individuals, would it be even more relief if you decided not to do the maintenance building this year, since this is a very unusual year? And that would give us some flexibility. Is that anything to consider at this point?
I would take a bit of a stab at that. I, you know, I think many of us thought, had that thought, okay, let's just defer that for a year. After reviewing it and all that, administrators kick in with them, my, my feeling was based on the fact that we're actually in an unsafe, unsafe condition there, that we needed to continue ahead with that. And we, and I believe can, and without drawing down our, our reserves too awfully much.
How many years has it been?
I'm sorry?
How many years has it been?
Oh, it's getting more and more unsafe and hard to work in. You're right. You know, if it's really bad, it's been bad for years, and why not one more year? That's my, this is my, my two cents worth, but being more than happy to have others.
And the other thing is, I know that there are spaces at the career center that maybe could be used as a carryover or tie-over for the year to, for equipment storage or something. I mean, I was 100% in favor of the maintenance, but that was before this financial storm hit us. And I'm just looking for relief in any way we can possibly.
I understand. That was one of my first thoughts, too, with what about maintenance shed?
Can we define what, what exactly we mean by unsafe? Because there's a big range of unsafe.
Maybe Steve can start.
Sure. So, you know, one of the, there's two main motivations. One is that the grounds crew and the maintenance staff have a place that is humane to do repairs on equipment. That equipment right now sits outside. It's not in a heated environment. You know, matter of fact, last Thursday, when it was sub-zero, we were, as a board, as a finance committee, they were outside working. And so I think, you know, from an OSHA perspective, I think we've got some working conditions that are not really acceptable for the grounds crew. I think they're outside in conditions that are, that can be dangerous if it's really cold, as it has been. I think, you know, right now, the plan is when they get cold, they go into the baseball press box and they get to the princely temperature of 45 degrees. That's how they, that's how they warm up. You know, so I do think that maintenance garage, which was in the original, actually, renovation way back in 2002, you know, I think it's, I think we should do it. And, you know, could be late another year. We can, you know, it's like my dentist said to me when I asked him, how long did I have to wait to get a crown after a root canal? He goes, until the day before it breaks. You know, and I, I feel like I don't want to put these, you know, these gentlemen and the other people out there in a situation they don't want them to be in. So.
So if we do postpone it to next year, how will that, will our tax situation be?
So not substantially. What we have is $190,000 for capital projects in the general fund. So that's what is subject to reduction if you wanted to. But in addition to the maintenance shed, we had, this is in the capital plan that we've reviewed as a committee, $40,000 in the walk-in freezer is failing, you know, it's leaking, not keeping things cold. So that's 40,000. There's 15,000 in parking lot improvements. There's, there's, then the 340,000 for the maintenance shed, and then 25,000 for windows, which had a security element to them, and 75,000 in roofing repairs. So, and then also 35,000 in security. So we still need to move forward with, with those projects, which, which means we still need a general fund commitment to that, to that work. So not really, is the answer. It would change the amount of the reserve that we consume in fiscal year 19, which has no effect on the tax rate.
Mike, in the building, building services and WICC, are they still building houses?
We have it in the cap the last couple of years.
I mean, has anybody given any thought to them building a maintenance shed?
I offer that all the time.
Something that could be whipped at. I mean, you might save some money.
Sure. Yeah. And again, that would have an impact on the reserve fund, you know, and more available for, for future projects, which we think we have.
I don't know where to go from this point, but that's another issue.
Other board-related questions, you have?
Just a quick question, because the, the two main issues that were discussed last meeting was the diversity coordinator and the PEAK program. And I'm sorry, I just don't remember what the, the dollar amount that we were talking about, saving by, by cutting the PEAK program.
There was no, there was no dollar value associated with that. That whole discussion was about the, either retaining the structure as it is or repurposing that. But the resource was in the budget that you saw. It's been in, from the beginning, there's been no reduction in, in the spending amount. It's a matter, a matter of how the, how the staff is utilized.
So is the decision that the board has to make, that there's a dollar amount there, and what it is labeled as, I mean, whether we bring in step or whatever instead of that? Or is it, is that, because there was a, a lot of discussion and I've gotten communication to things like that about PEAK. Is that something that, by us voting on the budget, is that, how does that have a direct impact on the PEAK?
It's very similar to, to all of our programs. You know, there, there could be a proposal at any point in the year. Of course, this is the time where we normally consider them. But at this point, there is, there is no budget implication with the PEAK program. The resources are unchanged from our initial drafts.
Again, I apologize for my confusion there. So if we approve, you know, what was just presented to us, would PEAK be replaced? I mean, are we, would we, the board, be putting approval to replacing PEAK with a substitute program? Or is that still something that can be worked out between now and start of the next fiscal year?
It's the latter.
So, okay. So, I mean, I know that PEAK has been an issue, and people have spoken about it, I'm sure, and hope people speak about it tonight. And so whether, whether we or the administrators think PEAK is the way to go or not, that's, that's not what we're voting on?
That's right. You know, the forum for that would be a program review, it seems to me. This is a, you know, a budget forum, and the resources are the same for the PEAK program that they have been with the collective bargaining agreement increases for wages and benefits. So the, the budget vote does not constrain that discussion. And it, it would seem to me a more appropriate forum to have a program review if, if, if the administration continues to want to raise that. So. Hang on, please.
Yes, I, maybe, maybe I'll ask the same question, which is, my intention is not at all to say, oh, PEAK people, you know, go away, we'll talk about it later. I mean, I think you're here, and you definitely should hear about it. So that when we hear about PEAK, that really is affecting not so much our vote today, but on our upcoming program review of PEAK. Is that right? I mean, and since everybody's here who wants to talk to PEAK, this is a good time to do that. But that won't affect, that'll affect action in the future.
So maybe I can just make a clarification. So Frank, what Frank was trying to say is there's, there's money budgeted for a program or service in some way. We did take it out of alternative education in the BAMS budget and made it district-wide, and this was within the last week. So the money shifted from BAMS to district-wide to give some more flexibility to have a seven to nine or 10, a seven to nine or 10 continuum, working with, with staff, and then staff are budgeted. From my perspective, part of the reason, so, so some of the shift came with me notifying staff that those positions and their roles could potentially change. And I notified them of that, or that the job itself is potentially going to change, and that might have a significant impact on some staff, whether they would, whether they would be interested or part of potentially a new kind of way we offer things, is, was part of the conversation. So that eventually got shifted to, we're cutting PEAK and we're starting something So that's where, where some of the, some of the breakdown is. The money itself is in the budget, and it's negotiable administratively and working with my staff on how we actually utilize that money most effectively to support our students and staff.
Well, if I can interrupt, it sounds like, it's, that sounds like a conversation that should be being had between the administration and the BAMS committee to make, to help facilitate that program discussion. Yes? That seems a reasonable way to go.
I'm not sure. I, I assume you have a lot of work to do with my staff around this, this topic. We haven't even really addressed it. So it's, it's a hot topic, partially because of that.
Yep. So if I could also just follow up on Russ's question, that is, that this budget does include three additional positions for the program that Keith just alluded to, a seven through 12 program that is addressing behavior and academic support needs for a group of students that, that we've seen the need rising. So there's, there's.
Would there be a three drop at BAMS and a three increase, or is it a net increase of three new people?
Net increase of, of three. And then there's a fourth position that is, is available from additional Title I money that has been assigned to this, this, this effort. So, so this budget includes four new positions for this effort, which also includes the two current positions for the PEAK program. So there's eight positions.
But, but they weren't listed as PEAK teachers, the money for those. So we're really talking about having the same amount of money, and, and I've just talked about whether they're labeled the same way, or delivered the same way.
Well, same, same amount of money. I mean, in the new budget, which included four new positions.
New positions, yeah.
So, so compared to our current year, the budget for whatever we want to call this program has grown.
That's right.
Yeah. To, to cover those new positions. And so the discussion that, that we have to have, and I don't know if it's a BAMS discussion, because if it's K through, maybe seven through 12, I don't know, TCC or something. But that, that the discussion that we have to have, and maybe quickly, because there are staffing issues, is to figure out, you know, with four new positions, you know, that can, you know, is it the same in BAMS and then expand? Do we change everything? Those are discussions that we have, and those are policy discussions, but not budget discussion. We've got the money now, they have six people in this general support program. And in the future, we don't need to decide tonight, but in the future, today, in the future, we will then figure out how to use, if this passes, and if it passes in February, how to use this money for those six positions and where do they go.
Yes.
And that comments.
I would, again, the same thing today, we are not here for line item changes, directions to administrators. And when we get to the February meeting, likewise, the public will not say, well, I think we ought to have four people in English and seven fewer in math, or whatever. You know, that, that kind of is a different topic and a policy topic and an operations topic. But we do have to get this budget, we have to make a decision on this budget today, literally, and, and get it, get it moving. Hopefully, no one feels like we're underhanded, things getting run through quickly. I, you know, I confine my comments to the ones that actually affect the numbers. And that's a important topic that certainly was well-voiced on, on Monday, along with the continuation of Latin and other, other things. So there's a lot, a lot there to work on, but it's going to be challenged to try to sort that all out today. And the money is there in the budget for both of those.
Ruth?
Okay. Something totally mundane. Would the sign-in sheet, please, work its way back so that the people in the back who haven't signed in yet can sign in? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Excellent. Sure. All right. So any other questions from board members, thoughts? Yeah. Good.
Just a, a quick statement. I'd really like to thank everybody that came to the last meeting and spoke. You really helped me come to a greater understanding of why we need a diversity coordinator, part of which is the fact that I don't understand. So thank you for coming and helping me to get that.
Anybody else who left email messages and contacted us in various ways? Thank you for your input.
Anybody from, else from the board have a question, or administration have anything that they want to say before I open up the mic?
I piggyback on Ian's thing. I, I did some research. I really, I really didn't, never met the diversity coordinator. I still don't know what the diversity coordinator does. But I did some research. I think Burlington has a framework for cultural, culturally responsive teaching. Is that something that this high school has? Sorry.
Sorry.
I can repeat it.
Please.
Framework for culturally responsive teaching. Is that something that we have, or?
That's part of the definition for what a coordinator would do. It's something that all of our teachers do. You know, we try to, for example, in English, we are always looking for culturally responsive literature to read and to talk about.
So between you and diversity coordinator, is there any kind of a policy to recruit multi, multicultural teachers in the school?
I'll speak in a loud voice. So we, we work hard to.
So we, we work hard to recruit teachers from not right here. We put out advertisements at school spring. We look at areas from around the country where we think that we could be drawing multiracial people to our community. I sit on a townwide board and we know that it's more than just the school, school district. Our whole town has to be able to offer what we need. We, you know, we can't expect to bring in people and retain those people if our town is not also offering jobs. So we're working on that. We look at that. A couple of years ago, we had Curtis Reed come and speak with all the administrators and give us ideas of other places that we could be advertising. So yes, it is something that we focus on.
This probably won't get much of an applause, but we have a lot of teachers with longevity and master's degrees and they don't make $78,685. I was wondering how you arrived at the salary for the diversity coordinator?
That salary was determined, when it went to full-time, that was determined by the previous superintendent about three years ago.
Giving benefits too.
Yeah, and benefits.
Right. It's a big job.
That's, that's salary and benefit?
Yes.
Yes. But that, that position's not on the certified salary scale. Because that person is not a member of the collective bargaining agreement.
Can you hang on for a quick second? Yes.
Thank you. All right. Sean?
Well, I would just like to recognize Jamal, who was our assistant principal here for many years. And he brought an awful lot of excellent ideas and diversity. So it's not like we have, you know, that we ignore the situation. Jamal was wonderful to have here, wonderful to have around. A pleasure to work with.
We get, if we open up to the community, anything else around the table? Okay. So again, I'm just going to say for the folks that are going to be speaking, just so that everyone can be heard, and that's really my goal, is for everyone to be heard, if people can wait until you're called on, please identify yourself and where you're from for the camera so that VCTV has that information as well, but also so that we all know who you are so that if we want to follow up, have a conversation, whatever, we can do that. And I'll just kind of, kind of, kind of go across the room this way, so we'll just do it that way, I guess. Oh, sorry.
You can put a timer on it.
Yeah, I think, I think we, I think last, on Monday night, we had multiple hours of conversation. And I think, I'm not saying that it was bad conversation, that's not what I'm saying, but there's, I'm guessing, probably about the same amount of people, and I counted over 60 people here on Monday night. If all 60 people speak for five minutes, we're going to be here forever. And I don't think that's anybody's goal. So if you, if somebody said what you've already said, if you could allow somebody that's going to say something completely different, that would be great. Also, if you could keep your comments till about a minute, I don't want to have to be the timekeeper and buzz you off or play the music for the Oscars or whatever else, but we want to be able to keep the conversation rolling. I think that a lot of people were heard on Monday night, and I think you've heard that we've responded in a positive way. So I'm just going to work my way this way, starting in the back. Yeah?
Hi, Mary Gannon. I live in Winchester, New Hampshire. I was here on Monday night and I just wanted, again, thank you all for putting the time and energy into revisiting the budget and then returning back here with us today. I know it's a lot of work. I'm on a school board in New Hampshire, and this is a challenging time of the year. So I just want to appreciate that. I'm also part of an organization, a group, not organization, but a group in Brattleboro called the Community Equity Collaborative, and some of you may be familiar with that. When I spoke on Monday night, I didn't identify myself as someone involved with that group, and several of us are here today. And that's a group that is looking specifically at how we are engaging with issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion in the town of Brattleboro at a lot of different levels. If you're interested in learning more about that, you can speak with myself, Julie Cunningham, Curtis Reed, Lyle's also involved with that, with that group, and Michaela, thank you. So what I wanted to say quickly is, I think one of my takeaways from Monday was, I really want to invite all of the board members to what I know is a preliminary conversation that's happening about training around these issues. And the way that I like to talk about this body of work, because it is a body of work and it's also a body of practice, and I think, you know, I get, it's hard for me when we, when we always talk about diversity as this thing, as this sort of additional thing that we need to be thinking about. We already have diversity. Diversity is not the problem. What the problem is, is how we are as a community and as a school system and as just individual folks, particularly dominant group folks, who are not really understanding what power and privilege means. And how power and privilege shows up in schools, how it impacts all of our kids, not just kids from marginalized groups. So I would really encourage, I'm in conversations with some board members already, to think about bringing equity, diversity, inclusion training to your work as board members. It's essential. We all have a part in that. None of us are above others in terms of having a better understanding of, of this body of work, but we all need to be doing that. And I know there's a conversation that's happening. And I would encourage you, I would actually urge you to really think about that, because what came clear to me on Monday night was, as we were having this conversation, and Ian, I appreciate what you just said, this idea that you didn't know what you didn't know. And that's really what happens when we begin to talk about some of these things, for those of us who are in places of privilege, we don't know what we don't know. And it's an uncomfortable conversation that Sheila spoke about. We have to get uncomfortable in order for us to make some, some changes here. So I'm happy to talk with board members about training, but I think it's essential for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say really quickly that, and I, and I can meet with the board on a separate time to talk about history, but when I started this job, it was one day a week, nine years ago. And before that, it was a stipended position. And before that, it was an unpaid position. That's when John Akey was in the role and Nina Wade was stipended. And so over the years, it's been a lot of work to get it to where the work that I was doing, that I was being compensated for it. Because it's hard to work a job one day a week. And so it finally got to the point where it was three days a week. So I have not had this job or benefits full-time for more than two years. And so that's something to think about. And so it's really interesting that all these people showed up when it was about to be cut, and it's very, it's a blessing for all our students, because it doesn't have to be me, it could be someone else. But the reality is that it's a necessary position, and even when I was working one day a week, I was not working one day a week. And I had no access to benefits or anything else. And just like everyone else, I had to live. So I was piecing together three jobs and working here. And so that's something to be thought of. And finally, it's in a position where it's being valued and it's when it's just about to be cut. To where someone else can move in, because not many people can take a job that's one day a week. So I think that there is a long history that needs to be considered that a lot of people don't know. And I'm very thankful that Steve even told me it was being cut, because if he hadn't told me, I wouldn't have known. And I wouldn't be able to tell, tell the two people I told who really spread the word. So, thank you very much.
Way out back.
Hi, my name is Mark Tully. I'm the resident of Brattleboro. I also have the honor of being a support facilitator for the Youth for Change program at the Roosevelt for Justice Center. I, I want to say, starting from the first meeting this program had, the youth made it very clear that what was needed in terms of, what they felt was needed in terms of this position in these programs, was an increase in support, a big increase in support and And all of us here today and all the organizations and coalitions we represent are not just here for a one-time show of solidarity. This is our agenda. It's on the agenda of the Vermont Worker Center and the Wyndham County Action Network and many others. So, and we're all committed to backing up youth leadership, and if that's what the youth say, that's what we're going to stand behind, and we're not going to stop standing behind it.
Thank you.
Sheila Linton, Brattleboro. I was here Monday night. Thank you, all of you on the board, for reconsidering, placing back the diversity coordinator position. And thank you, all of you in the room, for expressing your concerns. And especially for the youth. I'm also one of the coordinators with Youth for Change, so I want to do a plug for that and want to thank all the youth, some of our Youth for Change people are in the room right now, and hopefully maybe they'll want to speak. But as Mark said, this has actually been on the agenda in our communities, and we've been talking about racial diversity, we've been talking about shifting resources into communities of color, we've been talking about marginalized and oppressed students, and this has always been on our agenda. So when this actually came up, like what Mark is saying, it wasn't just a one-time thing. These are actually discussions that we're having in this community, whether it's on the, in the town government or whether it's the school government. We can assure you that the youth are actively engaging in these conversations and we're standing behind them. With that being said, Russ, I really appreciate the questions that you asked, because I still am not clear, I had the same exact question and I'm still not clear as to your response. And so for clarity, if I can say it in my own words, just in case anybody else is having trouble understanding it, is that there's money in the budget for PEAK and four additional positions. And that the PEAK program may not exist as a PEAK program and may be morphed into a STEP program in the coming years. Those people in those two positions could remain in their positions within that alternative education program, but you may shift the program to be a STEP program, which my question with that is, that got brought into the room on Monday, is what qualifiers are there for that? I know the woman, one of the people who were leading this, the PEAK program, talked about that, and I heard Title IX mentioned over here, and I know those terms. So I know that there are certain qualifiers, meaning you have to have a 504 or IEP or a certain type of disability to qualify for certain programs. And what I did hear expressed by the PEAK coordinators was, that is not an issue. And that there are many youth who learn differently and alternatively learn, and it doesn't mean that they have a documented disability. So I'm concerned with not being clear with what you're going to vote on today, whether that's going to all of a sudden shift and then those teachers, PEAK teachers are going to be outs because it doesn't align, and then it's not going to really serve the umbrella that Brenda talked about on Monday, which is not just people who have been documented with disabilities, but people who learn on all different types of spectrums. So I'm very concerned and I need some clarification with that. And then the last thing I'd like to say is, thank you on the end for bringing up money. And I'm wondering about all your salaries. And so we don't have the full budget, but when I was on the school board, so thanks for letting people know that I have been in your position. I'm very well aware of what it's like to do a budget. And I'm also very well aware of, some of you get paid a lot of money. And I'm not saying that money isn't deserving, but some of you might be sitting around the table making over $100,000. And so as I'm looking at that, and we're sitting here trying to cut positions that serve the most marginalized populations, I'm wondering in the sense of equity and community, what are you willing to give up to help our marginalized students? Because that's what it really comes down to, is talking about equity amongst all of us. And I know you all got doctorates and masters and work and tenure, and y'all did your work, but so are all these other people. And so are all these other professionals and teachers and counselors and medical people who are not being paid anywhere near what you're being paid. And so I would consider, those of you who are administration, when you're looking at your cuts, that maybe you can maybe consider an equity of what you think you need to survive. So Ricky, but is there an answer to that PEAK question?
Well, I think, I, I, I'm going to take a shot at it, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that today, well, I know, today what we're voting on is the budget number as it stands. And then over the course of the spring, the spring semester, that the program, not just PEAK program, but the, how STEP is integrated into the school seven through 12 is going to get looked at. And that may or may not be affecting PEAK, but that's a conversation to be happening as the semester goes on. Today, all we're voting on is the budget numbers. And you were right, there, the two positions that are currently in PEAK are, financially are still in the, and there's four new positions added. And how that, how that shakes out is yet to be determined, but all we're voting on today is the budget number.
I could add one thing.
Yeah.
That this program, you would not need to be on an IEP or have 504 or any specific plan. It would be eligible for all students.
Yeah, but my question, it is just sort of procedural, is if we, if I could ask on our next meeting agenda-
Speak up, please.
Oh, sorry, that in our next meeting agenda, that we have a discussion of who should be looking at it, whether it should be the teacher curriculum committee, the BAMS committee, a combination committee, or all of us. And then make sure when we have that discussion, that people know and people can come in and contribute.
Definitely.
So if we can just get that on the agenda.
And that's part of my point, as a statement I made on Monday, not about us without us, that if you were choosing to bring in a curriculum that serves a certain population, then that population should be part of deciding whether that curriculum is going to meet their needs. It should not be solely an administrative task.
All right. As we're going through, I'm just going to remind people about timing in your speaking, because, not to be the timekeeper bad cop here, but just in the respect to the fact that we've heard from four people and we've been doing this for about 12 minutes. So, all right, here, and then we're going to keep going this way. And then I'll come back over here, I promise. Go ahead.
I'm Brenda Siegel. I live in New Fane and I teach after-school programs to many of your students. And I also graduated from Brattleboro, like I said, last year.
Last night.
Whatever, two nights ago. So first of all, I want to thank everyone for looking back at the budget and hearing what everybody in this, what the people in this community were saying, because I think that that's really important, and I think that it's important to recognize that it was heard. I have a couple of clarifying questions. So to get it out of the way, I have to put my arts hat on for a minute and ask, when, Mike, you were able to make that shift with the circus group? What was the amount, or not what was the amount, you said the amount, but what was the shift? Do they still get the same program? That's a question I have. I also want to thank you, because I was very much holding my seat prepared to hear that the dance program was going to have cuts. And I graduated from the Career Center Dance Program, I'm on the advisory board for the Career Center Dance Program, and I've worked in the Career Center Dance Program. So, so that was really important to me. And then my second question is about the PEAK program. I'm concerned also, and I would like the public to be part of that discussion, because what I'm hearing is that the STEP program is geared towards behavioral issues. And what I heard about the PEAK program the other day is that the PEAK program is sometimes people who are slipping through the cracks but don't have behavioral issues. And I'm concerned that the way that this is now being framed, and I don't think that it's intentional, so I want to be really clear about that, the way that it's being framed ends up work around, around the public opinion of what the PEAK program being cut might be. So even if you're not cutting the funding, to actually be changing the program so that it's geared more towards behavioral and not towards these kids that are slipping through the cracks, is also, could end in disaster. And so I want to make sure that we're, we're really being wary of that as, as the public. And then I want to say that I myself, in the last year, have, one of the most important parts of the last year has been that I've had to examine my privilege in whatever way that I needed to, and understand where I was not, where I was not reaching my own unconscious bias and changing that. And I congratulate you all on hearing people, and I want to echo that I think it's really important to continue this work outside of this particular issue and make sure that we are, I like the idea of meeting the Burlington standards, I can't remember what it was called, the Burlington-
Culturally responsive framework.
Culture responsive framework, and making sure that we're maybe looking at that and implementing it into this school. So not just saying, yes, we want to be culturally responsive, but what is this framework Burlington uses? Does the community of color around here think it's great framework and how could we implement it here? So that is really important, I think. And otherwise, I just want to say thank you.
Mike, do you want to answer the circus question real quick?
I can answer that for you, Brenda. Thanks for asking that question, and the delivery of the program will be the same.
Okay. Oh, I actually had the same question about the medical services. It wasn't first on my mind because I'm a dancer, but, but medical services, can that be delivered the same? Or are some of those kids going to have to change the way that they, they? I just know that Career Center is another place where kids who otherwise don't succeed necessarily might succeed.
The program will change a little bit and the delivery model will accommodate many more students.
Okay.
All right, moving this way. Curtis.
Curtis Reed, Executive Director of Vermont Partnership for Fairness University, also a member of the Community Equity Collaborative that Mary just spoke about. Thank you for restoring the position. Great move. I think that there is an opportunity, though, to move that position into the central office if it's going to in fact serve it, and it does in fact serve elementary, middle school, and high school students. So that would be one shift that I would, I would recommend. And then the question about recruitment is, it's fairly easy to get a fairly diverse candidate base. The challenge isn't getting the candidate base. The challenge isn't getting the candidate base, so much as it is the internal culture that screens out due to unconscious or implicit bias candidates of color or that are in that particular pool. I encourage you to contact us. We have done great work with Vermont State Police and diversifying their workforce, the city of Burlington. Just recently, a couple weeks ago, Burlington School District asked us to come in and help them with their major diversity recruitment effort. So there are resources available that are local. Really helping with this particular issue. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, Levin. I just have a couple of questions. I want to make sure that we're being really transparent about what's happening here. So, there is no budget in the middle school for a PEAK program. That's gone. It's gone out of the middle school budget, correct?
Correct. It's in District Y.
So, the funding has now moved to District Y. I find it interesting that you're willing to fund, is it six positions plus paras? Four, how many? Four positions? Four teaching position?
Four paras, two teachers.
District Y?
Yeah.
By district, you mean just 7-12? 7-12 here. So we're not talking about all.
But it would, at the high school level, we're probably thinking more in grade nine and maybe a little in grade 10, you know, I don't know, but.
So, it really is a big shift for BAMS. And there is a radical difference between my understanding of a STEP program and my understanding of what PEAK does. And I want to make sure that you say we're not making a policy decision, you're not making policy decisions here, you're making budget decisions. But I think it's interesting that you're funding an undefined thing.
Yes.
We don't know what that is. We have a program at BAMS that keeps students in middle school. We serve kids who wouldn't be coming to school otherwise, who struggle for a whole variety of reasons. And at the middle school level, it's been working. Something different may be going on in the high school for those same students who are coming to school in middle school and are succeeding in the PEAK program. But so, I just find it really surprising that you would fund something that hasn't been defined and we don't know what it is. And the little that I do know is that it's not restructuring. I mean, are you thinking about an experiential, hands-on, community-based learning program with, you know, for small groups, 7 through 12? That would be the PEAK model. Ways to get kids engaged in their education for whom the classroom is not working. The STEP model, which sometimes works at elementary school and sometimes doesn't, we've had STEP kids in PEAK, in middle school, is a very different deal. The STEP model is about working on behavior to try to keep kids in the classroom. Which there's nothing wrong with, but for some kids, the classroom isn't working. And it's not about behavior plans or incenting them or anything else. It's just a different kind of learning. So I just want to clarify what really is happening here. There's been no discussion at the middle school about any other program. There's been no discussion about PEAK. There's been no discussion about the ending of the PEAK program as it is. Teachers haven't been informed at all about anything. So we haven't had any of these conversations. And I just, I want to make sure that the board knows and understands the implications. And I want to make sure we do too. I just want to be transparent about what's actually happening. That's all.
Russ, hang on a second. I just wanted to say that what I heard Keith say earlier this afternoon was that the money was in the budget and that he needed to talk with his team, including the faculty at the school, I'm assuming, and the administration at the entire school, involving the high school kids gonna carry over, to define what this is gonna look like. That's what I heard him say. So I think that, I mean, for myself personally, when it comes time to vote on this budget, I feel okay voting on something that we don't know what it is yet because we're gonna be involved in creating what it is. And I like that. I like the fact that the money's been set aside to create what is needed. So I think that that's what I want to say. Russ, go ahead.
My question was whether, if in these discussions that we'll have after today, of, you know, and I mean, it's part of it is timing and the budgets and things that are coming up. But if, and I know that PEAK is incredibly successful and I wouldn't want to do anything to undermine that, but is it possible within the system that we could, even though it's funded at the district level rather than just BAMS? And it also just seems, strikes me as making sense of, suddenly you graduate from eighth grade to ninth and suddenly it goes. So I think it's good to expand it. But can we maintain, I mean, you know, these are the experts. I mean, we hire administrators and they work really, really hard. And we have to deal with money and dollars and those sorts of things. But, you know, they're not promoting programs because they're flashy or because, you know, you don't have any investments in any of these things, I assume. So, you know, their job is to work for what's best for the kid. And we work really, really hard on that. So, in these discussions that are coming up, if it's really clear that what's working at BAMS is good and really can't be improved on within this now six-person structure, is it conceivable that we could keep it that way even though the budget is someplace else? And just add an increment to it? Or, I mean, it is possible that we all be convinced and you should be at these meetings and give us input that maybe there is a way to improve things. And so, you know, I don't want to prejudge what it is yet. And like Ricky, I'm not uncomfortable about, we don't need to have all the answers tonight, but I do want to protect what's working. And we still have that ability to do that. So I guess my question is, within this framework of what we're looking at, if we are convinced, board and administration and staff, that what's working at BAMS is good, is it conceivable that that could stay? Or are we replacing the whole thing with a completely different model? Is that what's being proposed?
I didn't go into this process with the mindset of, I think we need to cut PEAK.
Right.
Was not part of the process. The process, the hope was to get funding, increase funding to address a large percentage of kids who need some extra supports. We have, we have significant data that suggests that students in our school need additional resources and supports. So I went into the budget in a time knowing I was likely gonna have to cut, asking for additional personnel. Have not really, and so, in an effort to secure personnel and funding for that, process to happen. But the process has to happen with my staff, with my leadership team. I have not met with those people because this, these changes kind of came, you know, the budget issues and challenges came later in the process. So I really haven't had a chance to meet with my staff and work with them about how this could look. But I'm trying to beef the personnel up to address students that are not in PEAK, that are not on specialized plans, who struggle. And there are a lot of them, a lot of them. And we work really hard, my assistant principal, myself, and the teachers, to support those students and their struggle, they're still struggling. And my vision is to work with the staff to create a model to support all students. STEP has been brought up. And STEP, or some type of version of STEP for the middle school is certainly a strong possibility. And it kind of got thrown in as that's what we're doing. STEP is a very successful model in the elementary schools and we have some really highly-trained people in our district to potentially help us implement some, either some of the STEP model or all of the STEP model. But I still need to work with my staff to figure out how that works. With, by beefing up the personnel, it gives us options to try to address all student needs. Out of a courtesy, courtesy to the PEAK staff, I notified them that there was a chance that their positions would not continue as they currently are. And I gave them as much, a much of a personal conversation about things could, things could change here. Your position might not be as it currently is right now. I want to give you a heads up about that. Can some of those people be part of the restructuring kind of support model? Absolutely. It just, it was more of a courtesy to try to say, look, I don't think that things are gonna continue exactly as they're currently structured and I want you to know that. But my, our full intention is to try and support all kids. There's a huge percentage who need more support.
And that issue continues at the high school, where there is not a PEAK program. You know, recently the AOE commissioned a practice, a study on best practices for supporting learners. And I know the board got that. And one of the tenants that came out of that, one of the best practices to support struggling learners is to help them remain in their mainstream classroom as much as possible. And as soon as a student is ready to go back into the mainstream classroom, to do that. And at the high school, you know, we've got several years of beta. And, you know, and again, I know this is a budget meeting, so I don't know that I necessarily want to go deep into this. But at the high school, you know, we've got 43 students who've been through PEAK programs since 2011 through now. And of those students, we've had 15 withdraw from school, eight transfer, 16 enrolled, and only three have graduated.
Alive. I have, I have data. Come on.
So, this is, so, and again, you know, that's, that's a problem.
Can I respond to that? Hang on a second, please. Let's try to remain calm about this. And we're, I know that, what I'm hearing the administration say is that when the kids leave PEAK and get to the high school, they aren't as successful as they were in the middle school. That's what I'm hearing them say. So I'm hearing them say that they want to look at expanding whatever we're doing in a bigger way, 7 through 12, so that we're not losing those young people.
So our intention is to somehow provide something as they bridge from eighth grade to ninth grade and 10th grade.
Right.
That allows them to be successful, be engaged in their classes.
Right.
You know, and, you know, as somebody pointed out, you know, we have a lot of supports in place for students who are not on an IEP. And we're not, we're talking about here, we're talking about students who are not necessarily an IEP. We're talking about all of our students. And in some cases, that's gonna be a short transitional process. For others, it's gonna be more extensive. I can tell you that this year, Ms. Margitas has worked tirelessly with the students, with all of ninth graders, but with that subset in particular to kind of ensure that they're successful with mixed results.
I want to kind of go back to questions and other stuff from people that haven't been heard from, if we could. That would be great. So towards the back.
Karen Saunders, Brattleboro. Can you hear me over there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. From, first, very briefly for myself, then for my sister who can't be here. For myself, thank you for the hard work you did because I was here the other day. I appreciate that you listened to us and that you really thought deeply. Thank you. And then I went, after the meeting, I talked to my sister Barbara Saunders, also in Brattleboro and former special educator in this district for a long time. Coordinator of a number of intensive services programs. She had some really insightful things to say about the connections between the programs that we're looking at. The Latin that was already put back, the diversity coordinator position that has now been put back. And the PEAK program that clearly is a programmatic decision here. And about, you know, maybe she was channeling a bit of Sheila about how they all address the needs of students who are marginalized in different ways. And so to go sort of right to the PEAK program and that programmatic decision. A little historical thing that she brought up was that the district used to have more self-contained programs for students who couldn't make it in the mainstream classroom. You're looking at one right here. I'm pretty darn successful at graduate school. The only reason I didn't drop out of high school was I thought you had to fill out a form. I didn't know I could just walk out and never come back. So I just skipped all of that. That's the kind of kid who benefits from the PEAK program. That's the kind of kid who used to benefit from the self-contained, that you go out when you felt safe to, for kids on the spectrum that we don't have anymore. And some of those kids get their needs met through the PEAK program. So if you're gonna make these changes and make it 7 to 12, that the programming, the funding is expand PEAK. And involve the community. Involve the real experts. The people who live with us, the people who have, the people who work with the students in other parts of that sort of wraparound. It's not just a teacher, administrator discussion. It's a community discussion. Next, Barbara.
Hi, I'm Ellen Schwartz. I live in Brattleboro and I'm also a retired public school teacher, mostly in Massachusetts. So I did teach for nine years in Putney. I wasn't at the meeting the other night mostly because I didn't know about it until after it ended. So first, I want to thank the board for really listening to the people who did turn out. And I really appreciate Ian's comments, the comments of the gentleman whose back is to me, so I don't see his name tag, who did the, took the time to research what was happening in Burlington. And Russ, I appreciate your questions about PEAK. That's been really helpful to me. And I'm just gonna, because of time, I'm just gonna put a second check next to what Mark said, what Michaela said, and what Sheila said, and what Mary said earlier. Just like, plus one for all that. And then, because I was a teacher, I could sort of read between the lines in some of this discussion about PEAK and STEP. And I think I'm understanding the difference between them. And I taught for 30 years. And most of my, like, where I got my professional development, which was sort of separate from this, was really about, it was like processes for actually understanding each child as an individual, unique learner. As a person whose ways of learning are different. So if you're, and I believe in what they used to call mainstreaming. Maybe they still call it that. But if you're really gonna meet the needs of every kid in a mainstream classroom with supports, then the mainstream classrooms have to change. And most, I was a mainstream classroom teacher. And most mainstream classroom teachers aren't comfortable creating something like the PEAK program. That's not the way most, and so if we're not gonna do that in the mainstream classrooms, then the best way to meet the needs of kids who are not, not just not thriving, but they're not making it at all in those classrooms, is to create a separate program. And if we could have every classroom have the expanse of ways of approaching teaching kids that a program like PEAK offers, maybe we wouldn't need it. That's not where we are. The whole, we had behavioral interventionists at our school. I get what all that is about. It's very different than setting up a classroom where you're meeting each kid and teaching each kid through their approach to learning. And that is what I'm hearing that the PEAK program is. And it seems to me that if, I'm not sure about the statistics. This is the first time I've been at one of these meetings. But if those kids who are graduating from PEAK are sort of falling through the cracks in the later years, then maybe, as Karen said, or Karen's sister said, Karen's sister said, what we need is a continuation of PEAK. My question for the board, because I know you're not making this decision tonight, or for the administration, you're not making this decision about the new program, is what's the timeline? How is that decision going to be made? What is going to be the process so that the students who are in these programs and their families can be involved, and the teachers can be involved? And what are the criteria that are going to be used to make a decision to change from one program to another, if in fact that's a decision you make? Like, how, I haven't heard what that process is going to be, and it would be really helpful to know so that we're not in a situation that, like, I was in several nights ago where I found out about a meeting after it happened, because I didn't get on Facebook in time. And that is how I found out about it. I'll stop.
I think if I could just, based on your question, I think that
About the process?
The process is that, the process is going to be, it's not just one meeting. It's, I'm assuming it's going to be several meetings and several conversations across, with all kinds of different people, starting within the schools to see what's going on, and then going from there.
But my question is, how are the different people who are affected by going to know that there's going to be a meeting where it's PEAK and the future of PEAK, or what's it going to look like, what the restructuring should look like? How are people going to know so they can show up and participate in the meeting? That's really what my question is.
Yeah.
And what the timeline is going to be.
Well, I don't think there's, has been a timeline created. And I think that as Monday night's meeting and this meeting definitely show, is that if there's a meeting, people know about it. And they show up. Because, I mean, I think that the fact that so many people have come to two meetings this week to talk about this says something. And it would be on our board agenda, you know, those kinds of things as we go through. All board meetings are public meetings and are board meetings. So not only board meetings, but also committee meetings with the board. So, all right. I want to keep, continue us going, I guess, over here. Yep, Julie.
Hi, Julie Cunningham, Brattleboro. I'm also the executive director of Families First that serves children with disabilities. And I'm one of the founding members of the Community Equity Collaborative, which, forgive me if this came up the other night, but we founded because I hate we've got formed at this school. It was called the N-word hanging redneck association.
Say it out, Julie.
Can't say the word.
Nigger hanging redneck association.
I think we know, Julie.
No, I think it's important to put it into
It culminated with an African-American boy being shot at the Boys and Girls Club, as you remember, Ricky. And we've been working ever since. There's our mission, to make Brattleboro free of racism and discrimination of all kinds. We're not done yet. We have a lot of work to do. And we really consider the schools our most important partners, because this is where we can change the game. I'm on the statewide committee for, standing committee for people with disabilities. And in a meeting in the fall, I was speaking to someone from Burlington whose son plays football, African-American student who plays football for Burlington, down here at Brattleboro, gets called the N-word at a game. There's a penalty, but this student from Burlington received no apology, and there was no follow-up. And I just have to say, that worries me, obviously, not just for that student in Burlington, but for our teens here in Brattleboro, for all those kids that did not have an immediate, we have an emergency circle. And to truly understand the historical implications of that word. And the other thing I want to say in regards to this conversation about PEAK, which I didn't know this was happening, but this is very near and dear to my heart. And the kids that I get who graduate from Brattleboro, who are on the autistic spectrum, feel very marginalized. They feel very lonely. And there's best practices all throughout the country on how to have a welcoming school community for kids with disabilities. So I just really encourage administrators in the board to look for those programs. Thank you.
I'm a student here in Brattleboro. I'm just thinking about, right now, in my life, I'm thinking a lot about this country and other countries, being the world, being the planet that we live on. All of us people living in all these countries and all these places on earth. Our country right now is not doing so hot in terms of, like, being a good country, in my eyes at least. And when I'm, I'm planning on traveling a lot in this next year, and I'm looking at the other countries that I'm planning on traveling in, and they're not perfect. I'm not saying they're perfect, but there's other countries, I can't think of the one right now, but a police officer, one police officer shoots somebody, and the whole country goes into a nationwide, this is a crisis, and the whole police, you know, department of the country gets reformed. In Germany, there was a Holocaust, you know, like, everything. And on street corners, there are things there that say, this is where Jewish people were murdered, you know? They're so open about the shame of what has happened in their country. In our country, we enslaved African-American people, African people, and there's not that shame, right? I mean, there's shame, but it's hidden, and it's guilt. And just thinking about how our country is acting right now, how our president is acting right now, how is it that we cannot be like the utmost example of what our country should be here at the high school? Just because I feel like there's enough sane people in this room that we can say, yeah, okay, we should actually be extra proactive right now. And when something like that happens, that we call it a crisis, and that we call it, how is there no people of color on this board? And that, you know, the position that was going to be cut was of an African-American woman. Like, just the fact that there aren't enough people of color teaching at the school, and I know you guys are taking a lot of steps to prevent that, but just given the history of our country, I feel that it should be a lot more important that that happen. Like, you know, you guys, I'd love it if you would, like, take money out of your salary to give a position to more people of color, just because people were enslaved for hundreds and hundreds of years here. You know, black people were enslaved. And just the fact that that has happened in our country, in my country that I was born in, that I practically don't want to live in for the majority of my life because of what the president's doing and the actions that our country, you know, is taking right We have the opportunity to be sane and to decide to take really drastic steps in owning what happened and bringing, bringing people back into equality, the way that that equality group is doing and the way that I feel like we all can.
I'd just like to address that. Every country has plenty of shameful acts, and as do we. But in your litany of shame, which most Americans forget, is the American Indian, Native American. And you should never forget that.
I'm doing a project right now in school on Native American resistance in the face of white hatred and murder.
Go out west.
I'm literally doing a final project in my dimensions class on Native Americans.
Trying to keep going. All right, let's go ahead.
My name is Lucelena Maury, and I live in Brattleboro and I'm co-founder of the Vermont Wilderness School, and I'm the director of the Mahalo Arts Center, where we specialize in supporting people to create reality from the inside out. And I want to thank you all for your work. My family came to this country from Colombia. There was so much discrimination that what I'll say in a nutshell is, we didn't all make it. I'm a psychotherapist, and I've been doing my inner work dealing with my trauma for over 30 years. So I'm standing in front of you as a Latina woman, because I made it through. But I didn't have all of the support systems that would have made it easier for me to make it through. So right now, I work with babies, toddlers, young children. I work in elementary schools. I work with young women and teens, and I work with adults. And I consult with elders, because I want everybody, no matter their race, their ethnicity, their background, their spirituality, their religion, to really feel the inner worth. It's very important to not feel like there's a limit. So when this gentleman, Keith?
Yes.
Okay, so when you said, well, I went into this, I kind of knew that there was going to be a limitation put on me. So I want to ask you, Keith, to not do that. Because you know that the students that you're working with, if those students were given the supports that they need, they would become shining examples of what it is to fully contribute and be a human being. Because we don't know what the possibility is of human beings. But step one is to catch ourselves when we are thinking, oh, I know that there's not going to be enough. Just see if you can work with that thought. Because that's the kind of thought that doesn't really serve us, right? And so, right now, I want to propose that you put in another diversity person to work with Michaela, because it's a no-brainer. So I know you can work the numbers. You can all clap about this for a second.
I'm going to ask you to keep moving, please.
Okay, so I have a request for you. So first, thank you for working with the numbers. I would like you to go back and work with the numbers, and I'd like you to put in a second person. Because what's happening in the country and what's reflected here is that there's a lot of people who qualify as, I mean, if you are white, you're not just white, you came from some sort of ancestry that's very unique. So from my point of view, all of us are diverse, okay? But then there's that diversity of gender, diversity of learning style, diversity of endless, endless ways that we can qualify ourselves as diverse. So we have a concentration in the arts, we have a concentration in science and technology, we can have a concentration in diversity and peace studies, in BUHS. So the last thing I want to say is that I will volunteer my services through grants that I get to help this happen, okay? To help there be a concentration in diversity studies at BUHS, so that we can be on, raise the bar, raise the bar. And when I saw this budget, you have the money, okay? We have the money, and we can raise money. But we can be so much more than we can even imagine. And we need to start acting from a raised bar. If you think that you're doing the best, go watch Invictus, okay? So we really, this is, we need to have fun and support each other to go way beyond. Because this is, I'm really glad that we started this meeting knowing that Michaela Sims, who is totally, this biggest asset to the school, right? I just am so thankful for you, Michaela. I'm glad that we began the meeting knowing that she's still with us. But now, let's raise the bar, okay?
Hi, I'm Alex Fisher. I'm a resident here in Brattleboro, and I'm going to speak quickly on three quick things. One is that for my work, I'm a financial consultant. I know I don't look the part, but I am. And one of the first things I do with clients when working on budgets is often make sure that those creating budgets and those that work on the content are talking to each other. There's a difference between being an expert on the process and being an expert on the content for what is being delivered. And so what I'm hearing today is the difference between an expert on the PEAK program and an expert on how to bring together a huge amount of money and a huge amount of resources to make a school work. And so all I would say is, how are we bringing both of those expertise together to work better, and not having us go against each other as being an expert or not, but understanding what we're an expert in? Secondly, I am a parent of the only youth that spoke on Monday, a very proud parent of that youth. And one of the things that we talked about coming home after that meeting was vulnerability, and the importance of being vulnerable when speaking to power. And what I would like to do is say thank you also to the administration and the board for being vulnerable in change, that it is a huge step to say we were wrong and we will change that. And so I deeply appreciate that the lesson I'm trying to teach my child is being taught also and shown here on the board, and that I hope that is continued moving forward, to say, I didn't know what I didn't know, and then to take action is so important. Thirdly, I am one of the collective members at the Root Social Justice Center. Many of the people that have helped raise me and teach me and also continue my growth are here and have spoken. And I think what is hard for me is that the number of people that showed up in this room Monday and today showed up out of defense. We showed up to hold a very, very low bar. And what I want to see is us showing up to raise the bar, to do what Lucelena is saying, and really move things forward to expand the diversity program.
Yes.
To expand possibilities for youth, to work on diversifying this board, to work on diversifying our student, not our student body, well, yes, but also the teachers. And so, quick story is that at the Root Social Justice Center, we started with one person of color and three white people running the organization. Four years later, we have nine people of color and two white folks running the organization, all of which live in this area. It has been intentional, it has been hard, and it has been slow, but it has been part of our goal. And I just want to remind you that it is possible to have this kind of representation in this town. And if that is not the goal of the people sitting at this table, I'm curious what you want the future of this table to look like. Thanks.
It's been an interesting two days. Couldn't make it here the last time. George Carville, West Brattleboro. I think in some ways, this particular issue is unique. Maybe it is a portent of other issues. But I heard you, Mr. Chairman, you said, well, we have our agenda, it's published, people know. That might have been true back in the 70s, but these days, newspapers aren't what they used to be. I'd like to suggest that you make a commitment, that when this issue comes up again, that you will reach out to the various organizations that have spoken here and say, hey, next Tuesday, we're going to have a meeting on this topic.
Hello, my name is Maya King. I reside in Brattleboro, and I go here. And I am just wondering if you guys have taken into consideration the youth that will be affected by these decisions, and how you're thinking about, like, I don't see a lot of youth here, and I don't see a lot of youth in the meeting, and I'm wondering, and I kind of am guessing that you don't want youth here, because, like, we're powerful and we can make a change. And like, you have the resources to put it around the school. I've seen hundreds of, like, yacht papers all around the school, and you can have these, like, these papers that, like, change in the school that will affect us, and we will be the people affected, like, the youth who go here every day will be affected. And like, I just think that it should be, like, we should be invited to these things more, and it should be advertised more. And like, I was in the PEAK thing in middle school, because my grades sucked, and like, it improved my grades within a semester by, like, failing to passing on honor roll. And I think, you guys should question if the youth want these changes or not, because I'm positive they don't, and it will be affecting them, and it won't be affecting, like, it will be affecting us. And, yes, so, you guys, yeah, that's you. And who is actually affecting. And I'm in youth social, I mean, youth, what, youth for change, every Monday, starting at 5:30 at the Root Social Justice Center. So any youth should check it out. It's really fun. Every first and third Monday of the month.
I'm a local immigrant. I've just arrived in this community a couple of years ago, less than a couple of years ago.
Sorry, could you identify?
My name is Dec Cromer, okay? And I've heard about the diversity program being possibly eliminated. Thank you for not eliminating. But first of all, I want to address these two women. Don't leave. Don't leave. The country needs you. It really does. People who think, who are able to express themselves is digging in. Youth are needed. Please don't leave. Need help, call them, I'll help you.
The diversity program is being addressed at the high school level here. It needs to be, I think, it's one of the most urgent questions, our dilemmas of our nation right now. And it needs to be addressed from this level upwards. We need to have a program in place for kids in the grade schools, in the middle schools. If it hasn't been, if it already is there, I apologize. But it's one of the most challenging issues, as you can tell by the audience here, and nationwide. We have all these messages coming from the leaders of our country. They're encouraging people to think that They're encouraging people to think that this xenophobia is natural. It's not. There's only one species on this planet, the human species. We're a garden. You have these different colors, and the colors make it wonderful and beautiful. So, but it's the children who are being inoculated at a very early age. How do we combat that? Education. And it needs to start younger. So, I'm with you. Let's increase the program.
All right, we're hitting an hour mark at this point, and we, and people need to be moving on, so if we can keep our comments short, please, that'd be great. Lauren?
I'll try. So, my name is Lauren Petrie. I worked in the district for 12 years as a student assistance program counselor. I'm a parent of four children, one of which is kind of your way, special ed is currently in the BAMS program. I apologize, Steve, for saying something out loud when you were giving, we've known each other a long time, and really, I do, I do care about you. This is a topic that the PEAK program is really personal. So, again, I know I'm gonna get upset. So, I feel like at least with the data that you were talking about, that was Nancy Johnston coming to me, because we have no idea who has graduated from PEAK program from middle school. And all I was given was dropout data. And I was asked, I'm a PEON, like, to see if I could see any names that were in the PEAK program. So, I feel like I generated the data around who has moved on or dropped out. I was never asked to look at the data of people who have graduated. And I, I just think coming up in the last hour, I've got about 20-plus kids who have graduated that I would love to share with you. So, you know, so a couple of things. I feel like I was told directly that the PEAK program was gonna get eliminated, the employees were gonna get eliminated, and it was gonna get replaced with the STEP program. I feel like I understand English, nobody can tell my husband, by the way, that I'm talking, because he did not want me to talk. That's because he's worried about my job and how the consequences would be. But, you know, these are kids that I really care about, that I have dedicated the last 12 years of being in BAMS culture to support. So, I definitely am looking forward to a period of time where we'll be able to address exactly what that data is by reaching out to students today, ex-students. I had, you know, over eight or nine students who contacted me. And what I'm gonna do is just, I'm gonna end with just reading one letter that a student wrote to me because she couldn't be here. This is a young lady who said it was okay for me to read it. Her name's Shania Johnson, she was graduating in 2013. 2013, you might have not even, like I said, known that she was a PEAK student. There's a lot of students who have graduated that you don't even know who they are. "I received the news about the possibility of the PEAK program closing, which breaks my heart. I had a hard time transitioning from grade school to middle school, so I was offered a spot in PEAK. During my time in the program, I got extra help and support. I needed to be successful in my classes. Being able to go to a separate space to focus on my assignments and the help from my PEAK teachers made a huge impact on my learning experience. It helped me with my problem-solving skills, reading, study skills, everything. PEAK helped me feel more prepared to go into high school. I learned not to be afraid to ask for extra support if I needed it. Because PEAK helped, because PEAK helped me so much in middle school, I decided to continue to get academic support in high school. Without that support, I wouldn't have graduated on time. The PEAK program helped me. I know it's helped many others, and I would continue and hope it would continue to do so." So, I just, there's so many kids like this that would love to be able to advocate how PEAK changed their lives. And you can't change a four-class education program to a behavior intervention program. They're apples and oranges. So, again, I'm really hoping, I want to be, I really want to be transparent. I mean, I still feel like, if it's my, I know it's all the same budget, but you're saying that, you know, I guess, A, the first point, there, if kids aren't being successful in the high school for PEAK, yeah, the direct conclusion I come from was not their support from PEAK, it's that we're not doing something similar at the high school, which is why I thought I was giving that data to Nancy Johnston to begin with about who had dropped out. I mean, I identified kids who, again, these are kids who are marginalized, that were in foster care, that came from really traumatized situations, and there are lots of reasons why they did not graduate. So, again, I want to help those kids. I don't want to have less opportunities for them. So, I urge you guys to, again, I hope we have another opportunity, but to me, this feels like we're approving some kind of budget that is redistributing money that was specific for BAMS, for a higher bed, to the whole school that's not necessarily PEAK. That's what it sounds like. So, thank you.
Jacob Wheeler. I teach math and science in the PEAK program. Wanted to clarify a couple of things. I guess, one thing I want to say, and then I have a message from the parents that I promised I would read also. One thing I want to say is, is just...
Casey Dean, Katie Westby, Kathleen Sweeney, Sherri Lewis. Please report to EST in 106B. Casey Dean, Katie Westby, Kathleen Sweeney, and Sherri Lewis. Please report to EST meeting in 106B.
I just want to caution the board against approving something that you don't fully It feels like the possibility is there for a very strong philosophical shift in the programming from the PEAK model to a STEP model. And that's a huge one. So far, the process has not involved any of the staff, has not involved the PEAK staff, staff of the middle school, families, students, anything like that. There's been no program review or anything like that. So, I just, based on the way the process has gone so far, it feels, I, and I don't want this to sound accusatory or anything like that, I just question the way the process has been, has been handled so far and how it might be handled in the future. You're approving something that we don't really know what it's gonna look like, and if it ends up looking more like a STEP model and the PEAK program is gone, I think you're gonna have a lot of unhappy people in the community, and especially students that aren't getting what they need, which is, which is a very strong concern of mine. I'd like to just read a message that I promised one of our current students' families I She said about her son, he's in the eighth grade, it's his second year in the PEAK program. School has always been a challenge for him. School is tough for most kids, added disability, and it becomes very challenging. He went from being in trouble all the time, getting complete Fs, and feeling like a complete failure. Hated school, no self-esteem socially or academically. Behavior at home also changed. Talked to his doctor, changed meds, et cetera. It's hard to watch a child having such a terrible time. Then he entered the PEAK program, took time, but he is 99% better with schoolwork and his self-esteem. He's so proud of his work, which he, which he should be. He tells me about his day at school. Here's a kid who went from hating school and failing terribly, having no self-esteem, to looking forward to school, feeling proud of his work. I'm the mother, I'm the mother of four. He is my youngest. I wish the program had been available when they were in middle school. I know how much it has helped him. I just really wonder where kids like him will be without the PEAK program. All kids learn differently, and there are future. And that's, that's what she had to say. I guess I'll end with that, but I'm sorry, I have one more question. I just want to clarify. Are there, the positions that have been set aside, it's said that, or I heard that there are two teacher positions and four parent positions, I think is what I understood. Are those, I mean, what are the, what are the specifics for that? Are those BCBA holders or some other certificate? Or, I mean, are those math, science, and ELA social studies, or is it totally up in the air?
Jacob, what, what I've kind of iterated tonight is that I'd like to speak more with the staff and talk more about what this could look like. There, you know, there certainly is a vision for some type of introduction to extending our STEP services to students. How that will look specifically at BAMS needs some work, and as I talked about, relying on my leadership team and working with them to talk about what the needs are and where we might start. As part of a STEP program or service, a BCBA, which is a high-level, highly-trained person, it's a certification, would be part of that. So, yeah, you know, that's part of, you know, to do it effectively, you need highly, highly-trained people. And so, you know, that's part of the conversation moving forward.
When you're saying to do it, you're talking about to do a very particular, to set up a very particular type of a program.
Yeah.
Which is not the current model.
It's not the current model.
Right. I just want to clarify.
But there is flexibility in there to be creative in how we, in how we address some of our needs.
It just doesn't feel like we can do what we're doing already and do that. So, I just, it feels very unclear, and I just want to make sure, if I'm feeling unclear about it, people in the community might also be, people on the board might also be, and I just, again, I caution people about, you know, supporting something if you really don't know what it is, when it could be two very different things. That's all.
So, there is money in the Title I budget, I think, that came out today, that for an additional Title I teacher would target math, science, and language arts.
In an alternative ed setting?
In a regular ed setting for all students.
Is that beyond what? All right. I'm gonna, I just, I know that a lot of people want to talk, some people have already spoken. I'm gonna, and we're coming up on an hour and 45 minutes of being here. I'm gonna take a couple more comments from a couple more people that haven't spoken yet, and then we need to do some work as a board, and we need to do some things, because we are under a time crunch. If this doesn't happen today, it doesn't happen. And then, it doesn't matter what money we talk about, there isn't any money. So, we need to figure that out. So, one or two more comments, please keep them short. Over here, yes.
Hi, my name is Summer, Brattleboro resident, parent of an Oak Grove student. I've been to the school board meeting this fall in the elementary setting, where we discussed getting more training for the teachers in the elementary level for diversity, equity training. And it sounds like every, and although there's been a lot of comments, it sounds like the services that Michaela provides would be appropriate for elementary school as well. I know it's not in the budget here, but it's, it sounds like that's something that needs to come down the pipeline at some point. And I, just so people know that there has been some proactive discussions around this, getting this type of stuff in the elementary school, so hopefully, you know, some training happens, and also training in unconscious bias for the board members as well. So, that was discussed this fall at the meeting over at Academy School. And so, I hope we continue that work. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jessmaya Morales. I'm not a teacher here. I am a teacher, but I am not teaching currently in Brattleboro. And so, I'm coming to this meeting as a community member who's concerned, and I just want to really, one, appreciate all of the people who've come out and said very clearly that we do need to raise the bar, that we do need to push for more equity, diversity, and folks who can support kids of color and students with different abilities. So, I want to really just appreciate every single person who came here and took time. I know that I closed my nonprofit office at the last minute to be here, because I think this matters a lot. And so, I want to really say, it sounds like most of the community members here are really expressing this message super clearly, but it sounds like, from what I'm hearing from you, I'm sorry, I don't know you.
Keep whining.
Keep. It sounds like you've already made up your mind about how this program might look. And so, I really, really hope that this board will lay out a clear plan. I think others have also said this already, but I just want to echo it, that there will be a clear plan for how to involve community voices. There are so many experts in this room and who aren't in this room, who couldn't make it here. And an expert is not necessarily defined by credentials and degrees all the time. It is very often defined by your life experience and what you have lived through. That is an expert. To so many people of color and so many people who are different and other in this society, that is who is an expert of their experience and their needs. And so, I really hope that this board will put together a plan to include and embrace those folks, to set a higher bar and to make a really big difference, because there's always that opportunity. I loved what Alex from the Root said about them expanding the diversity of their staff and how it was a concerted effort, and they made a clear plan to do so and have done it. So, thank you.
One more comment.
I just want to say that I wake up, I'm gonna get emotional. I wake up literally every day, and I eat gum in here, like, literally every day. And, I mean, I'm like, well, I'll just try to be positive today, because I'm coming to school, and you have to go to school. And that's what we have to do. And, you know, like, I'm just trying to be positive, and I'm surrounded by so much negativity from lack of education, between everyone I'm around. They're not educated, and I hear everything, and I'm tired of calling people out. And I don't want to keep doing that. And I, this is so important to me. Like, I need this diversity program, and I need alternative women. Like, I don't have a disability, but I don't want to sit in a chair all day. I don't want to look at a board and be like, oh, yeah, this is my life, because it's not. I'm gonna do so much more than that board. And that is not me. And I want an education that teaches me how to be myself and how I am, and teaches me who I am, and teaches me where my place is in the world, because that's not what I'm learning. And I want more say, I want the youth to have more say in everything in this school, because we don't have any say, anything that happens. We had no say in the bells. Why did you get rid of the bells? Why? We had no say in that. Why don't we have a water cooler than the nurse? We had no say in that. We have no say in anything. Nothing. And I come here every day, and as someone who identifies as black and queer, and not being able to sit in a classroom in focus on stuff that I feel like is, I'm not retaining, I'm not learning. It's so difficult to process, and it's so hard for me to be here. And I wanted to go somewhere else, it's so much money, and I feel like this is the only place I can go. And I'm trying to just count down the days till graduation, to be honest. And it really sucks, but that's just my reality. And I just, I just want to find myself here, and that's not happening. I'm not represented, I don't have a lot of friends. I don't have a lot in this school. And I want to have a lot. And I want to have a good high school experience, and I want that to be a priority for me as a teenager, because I think it's really important. I want to have fun. I haven't been having fun here, I haven't been having fun. And that's the most important thing to me. I want to have fun in my life, and it's not happening. And I want to thank you guys for keeping it, because it's really important. So, thank you.
I just want to thank everybody who took the time to speak and who had things to say, and I know we did a lot, we've done, we've, it's been a lot, it's been a hard process.
I have a question, but I would like to know those, you know, PEAK and the diversity to kind of close.
Okay, go ahead.
If possible, but I didn't want to cut you off there.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
What? No, oh, no, you can finish.
No, well, I was gonna ask if it was a motion, so. No, well, I was gonna ask if there was a motion, so.
Does that mean you should speak now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just prepared something. This is in, to sort of clarify, maybe there might be a little bit of misunderstanding about the Latin position as it was articulated. So it's a little awkward to be advocating for one, so I wrote this and I'm gonna read it. It's awkward to be advocating for one's own program, especially when so many people have come to support the diversity and P program positions. I don't think these positions are at all in competition, but I'm also not sure if it was clear from today's meeting or Monday's meeting that the minor funding cut to Latin for next year would lead to permanently ending the program thereafter. Given the small budgetary implications of the Latin cut for next year, I'm hoping to provide a concise case for attaining Latin at its current two-thirds position. The total cost for this program at forty-six thousand dollars is really quite minimal and equals less than one-fifth of one percent of the overall budget. I hope I'm right there. Keeping the Latin program at its current level with the classes for Latin I for next year would mean only adding eleven thousand dollars back into the proposed budget. The budget crunch this year is impacted by a one-time equalized pupil recalculation. If the eleven thousand dollars needed to offer Latin I next year can bridge a stable future budget to be able to maintain the small cost of this program. Are my numbers off here largely?
Well, the budget includes the position as it is now.
I didn't, I didn't hear that actually. Is that true, Steve?
That's never been the intent.
That's not what was emailed to me. It was that it would be, that Latin I was not being offered next year.
But it's a point six seven position as it was this year.
I'm still confused. So you're saying that Latin I is not, is being offered next year?
Latin I won't be offered, right.
Yeah, so not offering Latin I next year ends the program next year.
But if there's, if there's enough enrollment, you would have the point six seven position.
It's not that, but if no one can do Latin I next year,
Right. The intent was that we would, because one of the, one of the arguments you raised was that we needed to provide a way for the students that were currently in Latin I to complete their Latin studies. And so,
True.
the determination was made that we would offer those courses next year on your recommendation so those students could finish the program.
That's only one of my recommendations. It wasn't at all to curtail the Latin I offering. I'm not sure if everybody understood that on the board. Did they? You did? Oh, okay. In any case, I can speak a little bit about the position and maybe in contrast to the other languages. This year I'm serving forty-seven students in Latin I and Latin II and the cited low number in Latin III doesn't include those who may still enroll from Latin II this semester. These students represent a portion of the student population and are looking to take a language. They need to be absorbed into what Steve is suggesting are already full programs and the other modern languages which likely would involve hiring in either Spanish or French and offset any savings by cutting this program. The argument was made that Latin enrollments are low, although I believe that there are lower enrollments in both German and Chinese. It is unlikely these languages would be attractive, these languages would be attractive to students drawn to Latin. It was also brought up that Latin is not taught at VANS. This has been something I've offered to do since the high school program was cut back four years ago. I spent several weeks of my own time working with foreign language classes at VANS, giving mini lessons in Latin. Guidance and other foreign language teachers supported my efforts to invigorate the program with younger students, but without any explanation, Steve would not advocate for this. It's also important to understand that both German and Chinese are full-time positions only because those teachers have been allowed to teach at both BUHS and VANS. German and Chinese have never had viable enough enrollments at just the high school to support a full-time position. Steve also raised the point of international travel. I led students traveling to Greece in 2005. I'd be thrilled to take them again, but as evidenced by the tiny number of students who currently travel with BUHS abroad, it's clear that such trips are largely unaffordable. The Spanish program, presumably the most heavily enrolled, has only six students going to Costa Rica this year and is not even being led by either current Spanish teacher. The Latin program works directly with students on a daily basis in classes and A's, as well as offers a haven for students who keep in my room during lunch if they feel too uncomfortable with the cafeteria environment. This direct, this, this direct contact with students seems like it should be a priority over such positions as Resort of Justice and the Diversity Coordinator that primarily offer assistance to teachers rather than direct help to students. I know, I'm sounding great. Okay, last paragraph. Eliminating the Latin program directly impacts students. These students drawn to Latin are unique teens whose interests are already more esoteric than many of their peers. These students have thrived here, have been motivated to stretch themselves, think critically, solve problems, analyze closely, and intend to detail more deeply than, than in other more conventional subjects. Thanks.
All right. One last, and then, seriously, we need to stop to move on. Go ahead.
First of all, thank you for the face-to-face contact we had for these last two days. Next is an admonition, that we become very clearly aware that what we are facing here is one of power. There is bureaucratic power, administrative power, and money power. And we better really acknowledge the fact that underlying those powers are deep differences of, as someone said, philosophy, and class, and race, and gender. If we don't acknowledge that, then we'll pretend it's a democratic meeting. But in order to democratize this kind of thing more, we've got to come up with formal and informal ways in which these three powers are not simply an antagonism. Acknowledging, reconciling, acknowledging tears, feeling good about it somewhere, is not sufficient for improving the lives of all the people in the community. We have to acknowledge the question of power which resides here in such a way that the powerful have less power and those who don't have power have more power. That is what this is about.
Okay.
Oh, can I just ask a question? Like, this is back from the beginning. A couple of the board members, I'm Cleo King, I'm a BUHS dropout, and I was just wondering, a couple of people said that they didn't know what the Diversity Coordinator does. A couple of the board members, and I just, I guess my question is just like, why? Like, why are you coming to a meeting when you know that a lot of people who are in attendance are here because of how important this position is to them? Why, like, and other people, I really appreciate, like, like, I'm toning it down because, you know, I guess I don't want to, I guess shaming anyone isn't necessarily helpful, but like, 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 how and why is it, is it that there isn't, what is, what is the, what do you as board members need from the community to help learn more about? I mean, I guess this ties into what Alex Fisher said too, is like, you know, there's, there's, one can be an expert in something and also acknowledge that there are experts in other things that they don't have knowledge of. And like, you don't know something, then you know it. But how do you get to the point of knowing it? And why, why can you so flippantly say like, oh, I really don't know what this is, but I'm gonna make a budgetary decision based on, like, the importance of it, when like, how do you know what, how important it is if you don't even know what it entails? Woo! I just have that, that's just been a question since the beginning of the meeting, like, yeah, like, why?
Sure. Let me, let me just, just quickly, I mean, and, and it's something that I wanted to say anyways, that you're right, I mean, nobody, none of us know everything and we try and we work, and it's really, really helpful, one, to have people coming to these. And I'm not, I'm not at all trying to diss, what I'm trying to do is to encourage you, and you're talking about an all-white board, you know, all-white sitting here. This is the time, and this is the community, I think, to remind people that petitions are out for the seats right now. And I think they have to be returned by the end of this month or near the end of the month.
The twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth.
Run for the school board!
So, please, please, run for this school board, run for the town school boards, whatever town you're in. That, you know, that's one way to, to educate us and you, you know, and, and so that we all understand each other a little better. So, anyway, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Russ. Okay, so, is there a motion? Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve or passing along for the town, or to the BUHS annual meeting, the budget in the amount of twenty-four million, five-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars.
I will second that.
Moving second it? Any other discussion on the budget?
I would just like to echo what you said. I'm not really comfortable, it sort of seems that our administrators, who I have tremendous respect for, want to build a new program, but it hasn't been defined. And so I was wondering whether it would be possible, since the PEAK program is very successful, to retain the PEAK program in conjunction with, at the same time, developing the other program. You know, it's, I think everybody's coming along the same oar, but it's, it's not clear enough that everybody understands that. So, the people that are objecting to the PEAK program going away actually have the same desires as the administrators. But it feels contentious rather than moving the vote where it should go.
Right. Any other questions?
So is that possible to do and pass the budget?
Well,
No, we have to pass.
We have to pass the budget. That's one thing we have to do. And what I, I will say again, what I heard both Keith and Steve say is that they want to work with the folks in the community, both in the school and the board and whoever else, to do what's in the best interest of the most kids possible.
Yes.
And that's what I, that's what I heard him say. So, I would say, to answer your question, I guess, I mean, yeah. But I don't know, I can't speak to that because we don't know what it's gonna be.
Exactly.
And we, and we can't, and we can't.
That's the problem to be where we are right now in the budgetary process. I actually have unbelievable amount of faith in these two administrators. And I think that they want to accomplish, you know, good things. So, I'm not detracting from you guys at all, but I am concerned about the success of the PEAK program and the importance of the PEAK program in the community being diminished somehow. I think we, somehow, we need, we need it all. Which is why I was wondering whether we ought to not do the maintenance shed, even though I'm in favor of the maintenance shed this year, to give us some monetary room so that we have, we have room to do things that have direct relation to students as opposed to what? They're both important. Anyway, that, after hearing that, I'm not willing to say, yeah, let's go for this, twenty-four, five-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion, yeah.
So, we can't vote on the maintenance shed separately or anything like that.
Someone could propose an amendment.
Yeah, you could amend, there could be an amendment to the, to the motion, and then we'd have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion, on the amended motion.
I propose an amendment to postpone the maintenance shed for until fiscal year 2020, or 2019, 2020.
We're proposing a budget for 2019.
Right.
But, but I would suggest that, that we realize that there is the flexibility in the proposed plan that Woody has motioned to retain the PEAK program as it is and add the additional resources that we just talked about.
And that would be up to the administration.
That, that's what we're saying. I mean, another, another way to say that is if, if the board wants to take responsibility for that component of the middle school, high school, you know, meeting the student need, you could direct the administration now that if this vote means that you will not change the PEAK program, the resources, the resources have, you know, funds to cover the current program and add four new positions.
Yes, yes.
That would be an unusual, you know, action of the board. You're essentially sort of taking some responsibility for programming, but, but it's, you know, that's, that's not.
Yeah, and on that same score, I think it's not the job of the board to micromanage the administrators. So, yeah, it's kind of like, what are you doing? Do you have, do you continue with a feeling of faith in our administrators or in trying to direct them? I think the only thing that would change my mind is that it's obvious from the public that the possibility of getting a PEAK program is very painful for a lot of people. And I've heard that for a long time, and I'm on the VANS committee, and the PEAK program has been a very valuable program. There's no question about that. So, if, maybe, I mean, can you, Caitlin and Steve, can you speak to my, my sort of unknown?
My, my, um, the, the, my only concern is, is trying to do, if you, you put money into PEAK and still fund kind of what I'm trying to, to do, and so I have some flexibility to build a step model, that's one approach. And, and it just means having more money to fund PEAK. But if I, if I, if I take, if I take the money out of the resources I'm trying to, to create additional supports for all kids, I might not have enough resources to make that effective, I guess is what, what I'm saying. So, I won't have enough staff to really, to do it the way, the way it could be envisioned. But I've also said, I want to work with my staff on that. So, so it's, yeah. If I could also just add to that, what we're, you know, what we're talking about is, you know, that we can revisit any of the line items over the course of the year. The voters, the electorate in February authorized the board to expend, if they approved, twenty-four million, five-ninety-one. All programs are subject to the discretion of the board and, you know, administrative recommendation. Of course, there's responsibility to the state board rules. You know, we know that a great deal of the proposal is, is to meet the state board of ed's rules for public education. But my point is, is that, that we could revisit, do we want to use a hundred-and-ninety thousand? That's what's in this budget right now related to Michael's question. That's the, that's the commitment to the capital projects. So we, we could say, let's not do the hundred-and-ninety, let's do a hundred. And let's, you know, give the administration more flexibility in programming. So, those, those questions really are, are separate from, I, I would, I would say this motion.
Yeah, we have a little breathing.
And we certainly have from February thirteenth, once the electorate takes action, to July first, and really right up until school starts in September.
I, I think every year since I've been involved doing budgets, which is probably about thirteen or fourteen now, there's never been a year where we have proposed a budget and not made some changes down the road and tried to come out with the same bottom line. We give the administrators some leeway. We have a dollar amount approved, and that's merely what we're doing. Our statutory responsibility is to propose a dollar amount to be approved. There may be a hundred other programs that somebody has a problem with, or I may have a problem with lacrosse versus some other sport. I mean, there's always going to be that. And there's room for adjustment along the way. And we've made some significant adjustments. And we've made some significant adjustments in our actual expenses in many years, realizing that something has come up that is appropriate to do. And, uh, that's where you have to trust your administrative team, but trust, but watch. And we, we do, um, meet, the administrative team is at all of our meetings, and, uh, so there's plenty of opportunity for input. And in addition to that, we have committees for BAMS, we have a teacher curriculum committee, so there's interaction with board and, um, and administrators. So, uh, my personal feeling is that we, uh, need to decide on this number statutorily, because it has to be warranted for the citizens. And when they get to the meeting, they're going to be in the same situation. They're not going to be able to say, well, I think we ought to put four hundred dollars more into lacrosse. That's what we're, uh, statutorily, that's what we're responsible for, is to come up with a number, and the administrators are responsible for how it, how it is met. And, uh, so, that's my.
Yes.
Also, Sean, I, I think we need to always reevaluate the programming that we have in place. Is it meeting the needs of all of our students or as many students as possible? We don't want our doctors to do what they've always done. If there's new information, that would make it better. And I think that's important, that we keep that in mind all the time. Whatever it is we're doing, we need to be looking at what we're getting for data. Is there a better way that we could be serving these students?
Um, may I remind you that we're getting off into the weeds a bit?
Yep.
We have an amendment, but as I understand it, there is no second to that.
We don't, we don't have an amendment either.
Oh, you don't?
No, we just have a motion on the table. There was question about how to change the motion, but
I thought.
there was no motion that I heard.
All right.
Yeah, if I could just add, I mean, I, I think I'm, in a lot of ways, in the same, same feeling as, as Sean's feeling. And if I thought that just approving this budget would be the end of, um, end of PEAK, I'd have a hard time voting for it. But I, I, I don't see it, um, as being an, by voting for this budget being an end of PEAK. That this is the start of a process, where we all have meetings and we will make sure that we, we, you know, notices are published. But, but I think that we should make sure that we reach out to individuals, and maybe we can keep a list of, you know, just add some more people to the emails when, when, um, agenda.
And will you reach out to students?
Sure. I mean, and, and I mean, there are student representatives that, that come sometimes, absolutely.
Publicly, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I would, do you know, I, what, what notices are there?
None, none right now.
Okay. There should be, there should be notices to students. But anyways, um, but what I, what I'm just trying to say is, is I, I'm, I think I'm ready to vote in favor of this. And this is not a vote to say, let's get rid of PEAK and move to something else, but let's continue that conversation. We're under a lot of deadlines, and to me, that's not a deadline that we need to meet tonight. I, I understand it would give some of you comfort, but I'm, I'm willing to, to, to go on faith and look at, to see what, what can be done. You know, another option is just to get PEAK and then get rid of the four positions and extra positions and look at next year, which is almost, you know, what, what Keith is, you know, sort of suggesting of, of, you know. So I don't think we need to make that decision tonight.
Sean?
I'd just like to say one positive thing in terms of the proposal that was put out by, uh, both Steve and Keith, and that is, it seems like they're collaborating in a really tight way to try to accomplish, uh, the same thing from seven to twelve as opposed to just seven to nine. So I, I can see you're, you're, you guys are thinking about that, and it's, it's really, uh, that's a very positive thing.
That's what I'm afraid, how did we, at the three-point-eight percent increase, is that arbitrary? How did we?
Nope. Uh, yeah, it is relatively arbitrary, yeah, not, certainly not. You know, we wanted to stay as low as possible, but that's, you know, that's a lot higher than your inflation rate, but it is, it is, uh, the proposal, as you know.
And what about the cap?
We're, we're still a little bit below the cap. Yeah, seventeen, four forty-seven.
Six-three.
Five thirteen, and the cap is?
Seventeen and forty-eight. Eight-one-six. For like, about four cents.
Okay, the cap.
We're, we're seventeen, four forty-three, the cap is seventeen, eight-six-seven.
Anyway, all right, so we have a motion on the table. Are we ready to have a vote on that motion? All right. All those in favor of approving the motion of passing on to the voters on February thirteenth, the budget amount of twenty-four million, five hundred ninety-one thousand dollars? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Opposing or abstaining?
Opposing.
Opposing, okay. So we passed eight-one, if I got that count right? Yes? Okay. Excellent. Um, all right. So really, the last thing on our agenda for today is, again, to sign the, um, the notice for the annual meeting on February thirteenth. So I have three copies here, that all, all three copies need to be signed by all board members. So before you leave, you can stop by here and sign those. That would be greatly appreciated, that we have that paperwork done, since we're all in the same room. I do want to just quickly say, too, to all the folks that came out, and I, again, appreciate people coming to our meetings. But, and I would also encourage you to come on February thirteenth, because a very small percentage of that population comes to that meeting. So, and it, and this, and our budget, even with everything in it, is, is significantly going to be, is going to be raising the tax, the tax burden. So people need to be aware of that.
Did you have to give a warrant or anything?
Yes.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, the, the things we postponed for last.
That's, that's, that's what, that's what's in my hand. That's what I'm talking about, by coming to see, go over here and sign before you leave.
Are you going to do a motion to approve the warning?
Yeah, we will do. So we just need a motion to approve the warning as it's presented, which was what we talked about the other night.
I move we approve the warning as presented.
Moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
None.
Okay. Is there anything else?
No.
Is there a motion?
I move adjourned.
Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.